Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Fulcher?
Here.
Mr. Atwood?
Present.
Ms. Ballard?
Here.
Mrs. Orza?
Present. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. President and the board. Each board meeting we like to recognize putting our rising star. Tonight is a very special night.
Let's go ahead.
We like to recognize some of our retirees. So if we could have Jim Greer come on up. Jim Greer has served Norwood City School District for thirty-five years. Doesn't he deserve a round of applause? He's a retired student in the maintenance department and he will certainly be missed. And John Peter is his supervisor. John is here also tonight. So Jim, we just want to recognize you for your service. I know many of us think, gosh, will we ever get to retirement age? And I imagine you would say the years have gone by quickly.
Yes, very quick.
And we're just sorry to see you go, but we know you're excited about your next life. And so we want to say thank you. Mr. Bryant has a lovely certificate here for you as well as... as well as a lovely clock. And we know that your time will be well spent no matter where you are. When you're at Norwood City Schools, you have a special place in our heart. And we want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Enjoy your time.
Jim, you started when my grandpa was retiring. Jim Jones.
Jim Jones.
Yeah, he in the maintenance.
I took his place here at the high school.
I know, I know. So thank you.
That's just proof that Norwood is a really strong type of community. We all know each other. Caroline, no one else can.
And there's no better maintenance people than Jims.
That's right. That's right. Thank you, Jim. We wish you well. We also like each month to recognize our rising stars. And these are students that have been selected by their teachers in each individual respective school. And so we will highlight them. I will call their name, read a little bit about them. You'll come down and get a certificate from our board president, Mr. Bryant, and then scan right down on the carpet and smile with your certificate. You'll wait there until we have read every month's story. And then at the very end, our board members will want to shake your hand. And then after that, you're going to get to go out into the lobby and Mrs. Havner will take your picture, okay? All right, and let's get started with this month's rising stars from Norwood High School. They are Daniela Navarrete and Yasenia Gutierrez. And I'm not sure if you've noticed them. So Yasenia and Daniela, of course, are December's rising stars, and they have always been standout students at Norwood High School, but this month, they were standouts for the district. The two volunteered to help with the ELL family feast. They spent a week of their own time doing everything requested of them and more. The ladies wrapped door prize gifts, made centerpieces, made table tents, made invitations, set up the cafeteria and decorated cafeteria. The two made the ELL feast a festive Thanksgiving environment, and they only hesitated for one minute when Mrs. Rosie ELL asked them to dress in a turkey suit. But they did. They knew it would make the elementary ELL students happy. The girls, as turkeys, enthusiastically posed for photos with students. So Yasenia and Daniela spent thirteen hours at school that day helping to make the district's ELL families feel welcome and did not expect anything in return. Yasenia and Daniela are examples of Norwood's finest students. Thank you, ladies. We could not have done it without you. You are Norwood High School's stars and you make Norwood City Schools great. For Norwood Middle School this month, we have Madalene Mackey, Jasmine Garcia Zatina, and Madalene is one of the hardest-working seventh graders. She continuously comes to class ready and eager to learn with a smile on her face. She's determined to better herself and to make her learning experiences the best it can be. She strives to be the best she can be and is always willing to help and work with others around her. Her smile is contagious, and all of her peers enjoy being around her. She's always striving to make other people happy and always tries to make the world and school a better place. She cares about school, her friends, and her family. All of her teachers enjoy having Madalene in class. We can't wait to see what the future holds for her because we know it will be something great. It's students like Madalene that make Norwood City Schools great. Jasmine Garcia Zatina, did I say that right, Jasmine? All right. She is an outstanding eighth-grade student. Jasmine is a hard-working and intelligent student that always has a smile on her face. She's smiling. She is. She's cooperative, responsible, and sweet to the students and to the staff of Norwood Middle School. Jasmine brings a joyful, positive energy to those around her and encourages others in her class. Jasmine is a remarkable learner because she is self-motivated and always challenges herself to be at her very best. She's an outstanding work... she has an outstanding work ethic, and she's very determined and conscientious in her work. Jasmine represents all the best qualities of a Norwood Middle School student, and it's students like Jasmine that make Norwood City Schools great. Aline Winchester is a very hard-working student. She has a positive energy about her and is a joy to have in class. She's always prepared for the day and eager to work. Aline has grit and is not willing to give up easily. She is constantly trying to improve herself as a student and is not afraid to take on challenges. Aline is very conscientious and respectful of the people around her and contributes to the creating... to creating a conducive, learning-inspired environment for herself and her peers. She has a very kind heart and always jumps to help others in the classroom. She serves as a leader and role model, both in and outside of the classroom. Norwood Middle School is lucky to have her, and it's students like Aline that make Norwood City Schools great. For the elementary rising stars for December are Jacob Jackson and Olivia Nelson. Jacob Jackson is a student that every teacher is fortunate to have in class. Jacob is a tremendous student for several reasons. Jacob, first and foremost, is a tremendous worker. He rarely needs reminders to complete work or to stay on task. Often, if he is asked, he asks if there is more he can do. Jacob is very conscientious of his work. He takes his work very seriously. He never hesitates to ask for clarification. Besides his super work ethic, he's a caring classmate with a big heart. Jacob's always there for the people around him, student or adult, friend or stranger. He would be the first to help a classmate clean up a spill or comfort a teammate who is hurt during a game. Jacob is one of our sixth-grade Sharp'sburg ambassadors. One of Jacob's responsibilities is to welcome substitute teachers to Sharp'sburg Elementary. He greets them with a warm smile, shares our procedures, and very important Sharp student expectations and incentives. Jacob plays many sports, however, his favorite sport is baseball. Jacob hopes to one day play Major League Baseball. His dream is to play in the World Series. He's willing to put in the hard work and dedication it takes to get there. He is very close with his family, especially his cousins. He likes outdoor activities, especially fishing. Sharp'sburg Elementary is lucky to have Jacob as part of its community. They say congratulations, Jacob, and it is students like Jacob that make Norwood City Schools great. It happens so often, a student passes through sixth grade and truly falls into a league of their own. Olivia Nelson is that student. She proved herself to be exceptional in both her academics and work ethic. She picks up concepts quickly and at a depth that goes far beyond the sixth-grade level. Although Olivia is at her best when aggressively attacking problems and concepts on her own, she's also very willing to help and guide others. She has demonstrated this on numerous occasions without even being prompted. This kindness and compassion, coupled with her ability, makes her quite the leader that others look up to. And down the road, Olivia is interested in some type of science, marine biology, or even teaching. Regardless of the path she takes, Olivia will most definitely be the one that makes the difference, and it's students like Olivia that make Norwood City Schools great. For Norwood Middle School for December Rising Stars, we have Bella Pettigore and Jamaya Hall. The fourth-grade teachers at Norwood who have chosen Isabella Pettigore as their December Rising Star. Bella is a wonderful student and exemplifies respect, commitment, and integrity. Bella is very respectful to others. She's always willing to help classmates and is kind to everyone. Bella also puts forth great effort when doing working class. She has a strong desire to do well and is willing to put in the extra effort needed to be successful. She doesn't hesitate to ask questions when she doesn't understand the content being taught. Bella is very kind and respectful to her teachers, other students, and the staff at view. We are very proud of Bella. Bella loves to read and learn new things, especially enjoys reading books from the "I Survived" series. Bella has great aspirations. She would like to be the first girl president when she grows up. We know she will continue to work hard and be successful for many, many years to come, and it's students like Bella that make Norwood City Schools great. The fifth-grade teacher at Norwood View would like to announce Jamaya Hall as our Rising Star of the Month for December. Jamaya has shown exemplary character, citizenship, and academic perseverance this year. Jamaya is a student who is honest and trustworthy. She's dependable and focused in class every day. Jamaya helps create an academic atmosphere of peace in the classroom by politely listening and by leading through example. She's always prepared and strives to give her very best on all assignments. Jamaya's favorite subject in school is art. She loves to draw and dance and would like to become an artist someday. It's with great pleasure that the fifth-grade teachers at Norwood View honor our Rising Star, Jamaya Hall. It's students like Jamaya that make Norwood City Schools great. For Williams Avenue Elementary, we have Kyle Green and Brendan Murphy. Kyle Green is a second-grade student at Williams Avenue Elementary School. He enjoys every aspect of school, especially science. His favorite topic so far this year has been... have been learning about the solar system. Kyle enjoys reading the Magic Treehouse series, riding his bike, and participating in sports. He wrestles and is a member of both a basketball and a football team. Kyle likes to move and participate in various activities. He has said that when he goes to college, he hopes to be on the school's football team and play at the college level. Kyle is a prime example of what it means to be a champ student at Williams Avenue Elementary. He's a fantastic student and is always willing to help a friend. Kyle, we wish the best for you and know you can accomplish whatever you put your mind to. Congratulations, Kyle, for being the Star Student of the Month, and you are what makes Norwood City Schools great. Brendan Murphy is our fourth-grade Rising Star. Brendan is not new to Norwood, but is in his first year at Williams, and they are thrilled to have him. Brendan is a caring individual who pays attention to the people around him and stands up for what is right. He is an avid sports fanatic and loves to play football or basketball outside each day. He works hard in class and is eager to learn. He cooperates with others and is always quick to help a friend problem-solve. Brendan is always dressed for success, and it shows in his personality and academically. His positive attitude, his smile are contagious and brighten up any classroom. Brendan is a true example of a champ student and demonstrates what's expected at Williams Avenue Elementary as well as at the schools. Congratulations to you, Brendan, for being the Rising Star of the Month, and it's students like Brendan that make Norwood City Schools great. Hey, moms and dads, we're going to get a photo op here in a moment, but our board members would like to shake their hands and congratulate them.
Congratulations. 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 You rock. Awesome. Congratulations. So nice to meet you, Kyle. Jamaya, your timing was perfect. Congratulations. Congratulations. I can tell you. You're amazing. Congratulations. Hey, can you show us how to stand? Can you just shift? Yes, yes, yes. Yeah, we're ready. I can have this to just kind of expect a little closer together from the floor to the center. And the board members can just step forward a little and shift this. They'll put this. Okay, we're ready. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect job.
Great. Moms and dads, family, thank you so much for your time. You've had a lot of events, especially since you've run so big since Lincoln. There'll be more things to go to the lobby, and thank you again for sending us your Rising Star. We love that.
Okay, we're ready. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect job.
Great. Moms and dads, family, thank you so much for your time. You've had a lot of events, especially since you've run so big since Lincoln. There'll be more things to go to the lobby, and thank you again for sending us your Rising Star. We love that.
Wait, 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 wait. Okay, hey, this is our high school student. She made it! Yay! Congratulations! Would you like to go and read that about you? Were you Yasenia or Daniela? Okay, so they said you and Yasenia have always been standout students, and you volunteered for the ELL family feast. You spent a week of your own time doing everything to get it ready. You wrapped the prizes, you made centerpieces, you made table tents, and invitations. You set the cafeteria, decorated the cafeteria, and you dressed in a turkey outfit. That's awesome. So your teachers...
So here's what they did. So Houseville 491 was originally the substitute. It's professional.
So congratulations. But then they lumped them together with six of them?
Because 491 had already gone through most of the process. And both... and the same committee, and then both four of us. So it was the closest to having...
Getting it finished.
Getting it finished. So what they did is they took Houseville's third one and they just tacked it on the end.
And that's the one with the student award?
Correct.
So it's the staff and student project, basically, information.
Yeah.
So this is... it passed through committee, so now it's going to the floor.
Hold on.
So it isn't...
Well, no, it hasn't been signed by the government yet.
So it's not... So it has to...
Right.
So it just has the signature from the government, should happen. Yes, it's better. Yes, thank you. Wonderful. So Cam, I will have someone on education.
Okay.
I rarely ever do. It's not normal, but we got one.
And that confused me because they didn't...
Because it could also go under legislation report, so I don't know. It's like, I guess it applies because it's a graduation requirement. I guess it could.
Go either way.
Where is it?
Do you notice the lights one side? Don't like these lights?
I thought we did it to be nice to us. We didn't?
What was that? It's all the white ones. All white ones. So that was number one.
So wait a minute. Where is the... Kind of like you're sitting on candlelight or something.
So we just need to go to the bottom.
You don't play violin, Gabbard? Nothing?
Are you ready for me?
You are next on our agenda. So as you know, board members, each month we like to give our principals an opportunity to give you an update before you can do a field for what's happening in the building. So this month, it's Williams Avenue Elementary and Mr. Gabbard.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
We're glad you're here.
It's not often, you know, this being my... start of my eleventh year in administration, I was thinking about this today. Fourteen years at the middle school. This is my tenth year here, or ninth year at Williams. And with the thirteen years that I had at Allison in middle school and high school, it's thirty-five years. So Jim still has me beat, though, because thirty-five years plus his thirteen years, he's got me beat. But it just made me think, I got thirteen more years. So a lot more work to do. So I was here to tell you a few things about Williams and what's going on. A lot of you see Twitter and Facebook, and you see a lot of neat things that we're doing. But just to let you know, we're already off and running. We are in week six of the second quarter, and we're already seeing growth with each and every grade level with our students with tech... use of technology and Google Classroom, which has primarily been for the older grades, fourth through sixth. Third grade now has started in with that, and second grade is actually kind of tinkering with it, and we're working on first grade, too, so to kind of get them used to the technology and Google as that's kind of taken over the realm of education. We also have a new reading program in our curriculum, Wonders, and there is a lot of information here. We've had some PD on this already a couple times, and they had some in the summer, some of them attended those, and just about everybody attended the ones that we've had the past couple times, our days off, but our PD days. They're learning how to organize all this information, and there's sets and sets and boxes and boxes of this stuff, but they're starting to get more into it, and as they're understanding it better, we're already starting to see those leaps and bounds. I recall first grade at the beginning going, there's no way our first grader is going to understand this. They're just not going to be able to do it. And now they're going, ah, this is easy. Now we're moving on to the next stuff. So they're already picking it up, and they're already moving with it. So we're seeing leaps and bounds, and that's actually helping us in our MAPS scores. It's also helping us in our Ames Web assessments as well. This year, we continued our success with preschool, along with Sharp'sburg being rated a five-star program. I'm sure you're familiar with some of these people in preschool, and these are spectacular people. When I talk about them, I talk with high regard because it's not just the teachers, it's the support staff as well, just to watch them do some of the amazing things that they do and taking some of the kids, even with special needs, and then on the Montessori side as well. Seeing them be able to do the things that they do is short of a miracle in some cases. Some of these kids don't have the basic skills. I was talking to a teacher today, and we said, you know, it's... kids today just... they don't get out and play. They don't use their imagination, and the Montessori side allows them to do that and have that thought process to work through things. So it is an important piece that goes into that. And then on the other side, the skills that they're learning there and the language, I meet with those teachers on occasion, and we talk about where they started and where they're at now, and knowing their numbers and letters. It's, again, leaps and bounds from where they started. With the support of our administration, our board, and the community, we continue to show, not just at Williams but throughout the district, why we're one of the top one-hundred schools in the state and why we always rank one of the highest up there. We are down a little bit in enrollment this year. Last year, we were at three fifty-two. Nine years ago when I started, we had four hundred and twenty students, and we had three teachers for every class. Now we're down to two in just about every class except for kindergarten and first grade. First grade this past week just went to two classes, and we combined one of those classes. The numbers were eleven, twelve, and twelve. And fiscally and more responsibly for us, in order to run, you know, good groups for your reading groups and your math groups, you've got to have some numbers. So we've split Ms. Recker's class, and she's now used as a co-teacher. That started fully this week, and we use her as a co-teacher. She's working in the classroom as well as pulling out, doing some reading extensions as well as math. So we're looking forward to see how that's going to work for us. And then you also throw in Ms. Case, who's one of our aides in first grade. She's a retired teacher of thirty years, thirty-five... no, thirty-three years, I think she had in. And, you know, the master's degree as well. Some of the parents... I had two parents that had some concerns about that and adding people into those other two classrooms, but we still sit at seventeen and eighteen in those two classrooms, which is still one of the lowest, you know, teacher-to-student ratios in the district. And then you throw Ms. Case in there, so it's, you know, we have it one to three with Ms. Case. That makes it even better. Some of the highlights in pre-K, second year in a row for the five-star rating. Again, those teachers and staff do an amazing job, and they get those students ready for kindergarten. We actually have, a few years back, we started kind of looking at and highlighting those students that were either in Montessori or in the other program and seeing where they're at. Some of those students that started in our preschool originally way back when it first started, when it was at Allison, they're in eighth grade now, and most of those kids are doing really, really well. So we appreciate everything they do to get them started off on the right foot. We have a couple new teachers. Our third-grade English Language Arts teacher, Jake Martin, who has Norwood roots, his... both of his parents graduated from Norwood. I believe eighty-seven, and his mom was his dad. And mom graduated, I think, in ninety. So Darrell Martin, remember Darrell? And I always forget Megan's last name.
Michelle Garner.
Michelle, Michelle, yes. And she's actually studying to be a teacher as well right now, along with that, and Jake's been kind of helping her with some of those. Jake does a wonderful job. His big thing in talking to... when I did reference calls on him before hiring him, his big thing was building relationships, and he's always wanted to be a teacher. And he kind of overthinks things a little bit, as first-year teachers, you know, typically do, but he's doing a great job. He's already built those relationships, and when those kids walk in the classroom, they know what to expect, and they're ready to rock and roll. He's doing a really cool thing with postcards that he started at the beginning of the year, and honestly, he didn't think it would get very far, and they were hoping to get the United States, those fifty states, postcards from each one. So they've... they've kind of put this out there, and then I helped out with putting a little bit on social media. The parents started putting it out on their Facebook. They've had visitors from Channel Nine come in. They actually did a Good Morning thing. I don't know if you all saw that or not. It was really cool. So they've had postcards from France, some other foreign countries, and they've got just about every state. So what they do when they need to come in, each week they pick each little group that he has in her class, picks one, and they go over that and they do some research on it, and then they fill in their little map. So by the end of the year, he's going to have it all filled in, and they're going to know pretty much what it's about in each and every state, and they will present that information as well. Our other new hire is Ms. Parks. Mary Parks is intervention specialist, and she's done a tremendous job stepping in where we've had in this particular position. We had three different teachers in the last four years, and her being the third one, she has done spectacular and building relationships as well. She's working with parents, students, aides, community groups. They did a trunk-or-treat with helping Ms. Eschman and helping her students get connected with the community. So she's doing a spectacular job as well. Our PTA, simply amazing. We did our fundraiser, and we raised a little over seven thousand dollars, and that's cookie dough. And I've had a lot of people, and you've asked in the past, how is your PTA just do this? Our shade project, you know, that year we raised about ten thousand dollars. We built the shade project. Last year, we put in the Gaga pits, and we actually got some donations and some help with the people that built it. And knowing the right people, we were able to get some padding in there so the kids weren't scraping up their knuckles, because every day somebody would hit the blacktop trying to hit the ball, and they'd have bloody knuckles. But we got that fixed. And this year, we had a couple different ideas. I've been talking with John on this. One of the ideas originally was, if you go down to Smale Park, you see these little workout things, and they're into the ground. You can't beat them up, you can't tear them up, and we were looking at getting a station of those, which was eight of those different stations for different exercises, and put them along the side of the playground. stations for different exercises, and put them along the side of the playground. And so that was, that was our main idea for raising this money this year. After talking with John and going over a few things, we'd have to get the ground surveyed, see if there's any pipes or electric or anything like that going through there. Then you have to set it in concrete and into the ground. And anytime you have anything that's off the ground that they could climb on, you have to have that thick padding underneath it, which would cost another additional $2,000 or $3,000. So that was more than what we had raised, what it would have cost. So we're kind of looking into a few other things, but we're still talking about with the PTA, what we can do with that. Our cookie dough went really well. We had 25 students sell over 25 items. And the goal was, if you sold 25 items or more, you got a limo ride that took you all around greater Cincinnati area. They went down to Smale Park, and it was actually a day about 45, a little cold. But they got out, they got to plan the equipment down there and run around for a little bit and get their picture taken down at Fountain Square. It came back to a pizza party, so that was good for them. We just had our Merry Mart, which was very, very successful. We had 15 different vendors come in. And it's, thinking back, this was perfect timing, just by chance. You had Christmas Town where all the vendors were, and then they had it at Sharpsburg, and then it came to us. Tuesday was Sharpsburg, last Thursday was for us. It was a crazy day, but we had a little help from the fire department and the police department, they came in, they wrapped the gifts, and they were in and out all day long. We've set up something different this year, that's different than normal. We do buddy and partner groups. So for example, our pre-K works with our first grade groups. First grade comes down to a pre-K room, and they read to them. Individual students will take turns reading to the pre-K. Then, once they're done reading, they all partner up and they go over and they read books together. So that's been a nice little partnership. We also have the fifth grade, who's embraced not only just wonders, but the science curriculum as well, working on more STEM-style activities and experiments. It helps with critical thinking and problem solving. They've worked with the robots, which you've seen the demonstration. But they also partner up with the kindergarten. And our fifth graders, when they partner up, they take these lessons that they've learned in science and in reading, and they work with the kindergartners and show them how to do it and kind of teach them how to do that. We also have fifth graders that go down and work with fourth grade. And actually, today was our first kind of trial run. We kind of did a little thing where we have one of our students come in and work with a small group. And these kids loved it. They absolutely loved it. And the kids that were teaching it were doing an incredible job. And they would stop the students and they would talk to them, and say, all right, what answer would you put here? And when they would give an answer, two or three of them, how'd you come about thinking that? So they had them thinking differently, and the kids were so excited. And they were only in there for about 30 minutes. And when they left, they were like, all right, we need to get this finished, because tomorrow we hope that they come back and we can do this again. So there's another piece that we're kind of just throwing in there, trying to get them to become a little bit more in that leading aspect. As I mentioned, social media is always, the past few years, been a big thing for us with Facebook. We had the Williams Twitter, that anytime a Facebook tweet, you know, goes out, it also tweets it with that. But this year, with the book that Dr. Sabo gave us, it asked us to get out on Twitter and start trying to get out there. We've all kind of embraced that in our different way. I may have gone a little bit more than some of the others, but I enjoy it and just showing off all the cool stuff that we do. And that's at Principal Gabby. I say Principal Gabby from the news story that was there, that's what the reporter called me, so that's what I went with. And it literally is just nothing but positive stuff. It's constant out there. And what's really cool, if you know anything about Twitter, is when you have somebody that's well-known and has, you know, 13, 15, 20,000 people that follow them, and they like something you have, or they retweet it, or they send you a message and they want to talk with you about those things. And I've had that happen a few times. And it's, it's one of those things where you're like, oh, it's great! And then a teacher says, hey, you got a minute? It's like, oh, ruin that moment! But it's all good, it's all fun, and we're really enjoying it. One of the other apps using that social media, opening those communication lines, is Class Dojo. Over the past few years, a couple of teachers have used this in all the buildings, but we've taken it to a point where the beginning of the year, fourth grade used it last year specifically. And we took that and we said, we want you to present this to the rest of the staff, and we're going to have K to six working through this. Preschool already has their lines of communication. And they were, they didn't want to go that route just yet and figure it, so what they're doing is successful, I didn't want to change that. The others were willing and ready to do that, they were using different apps, Remind, and some of them had a Facebook page and this and that. But this was a great way to open up those lines. If you haven't heard of Class Dojo, have any of you heard of it? It is a wonderful app. In a sense that teachers can keep points, positive. They can also see if, you know, their child's having a rough day. They can send pictures of great work that they're doing, send out pictures of the newsletters. They can put out attachments of whatever the cafeteria schedule is. And neat stuff that they're doing. Hey, reminder, just to let you know, tomorrow the permission slips need to be in for our field trip next week. Those types of things, it's just instant and quick, it's on the parent's phone. So they get a little buzz and they go like this, and they're like, oh, okay, that's good to know. And the parents can reply back to that teacher. It doesn't go to anyone else, it just goes to that teacher. And it's been proven to do really well. And the kids get into this as well. If you go into a couple of our classrooms, especially fourth grade, they use this, because this is their second year using it. The teachers have it on their phone, so as they're walking around and they're seeing good stuff, they give points. Kids are on their Chromebooks and they hear bing, 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 bing. That, they know that sound. Yes, and you'll see them go, yes, we just got points. On the other hand, if you hit the same time, if you're in Ms. Crouch's room, and Ms. Dolan just gave her class some points, you're going to hear that on the, in Ms. Crouch's class. And it's amazing, you hear the kids go, shh, hey, we've got to get, Ms. Dolan's class just got points, we've got to get points. So it gives a little competition factor in there as well. So it works not just, you know, for the kids, but opening those lines for quick, direct, and efficient communication with the parents. On that same side, they can also get in touch with me. Being the administrator of the building, they can send me direct messages. If it's a concern or something like that, I ask, I message the Mac saying, please give me an email or a call. You're morally welcome to stop and see me anytime. And we've only had a couple of those. As far as our health programs with our Health Aid, Kathy Strosser-Diner-Rose do a wonderful job in communication, getting out newsletters. We've had UC Blue Ash sponsor program for Cincy Smiles. And we've had 40 students in this program. Over the years, we've had about 40 students each year. They go in, they go to UC Blue Ash, they learn about dental hygiene, they learn the educational side of it. They also get dental screenings as well as dental cleanings. And most of those are done right there in our Health Aid office. Dr. Yoxheimer, where I go, comes in and he, you know, he talks to the kids and they go over and do the cleanings. What's been nice is a few of those students who don't want to go with their parents, and the parents blame us and say, well, you got to do it, school says you have to do it. So they do it, and it works. And the parents are very gracious. Another program that they put out this year and the past couple of years is from Lenscraft, sponsored by LensCrafters. They actually go to LensCrafters, a group of kids, we've had about 20 kids so far, 10 kids at a time they go, they get screened, to see where their vision's at, and then they get fitted for those glasses. And the doctors come into the building, at that point, they fit them with the glasses and they send them off with the brand-new prayer glasses. Really good stuff. Our after-school programs, we have right now 43 students in our before and after-school programs. And all year, they've had these fun Fridays. And basically, each Friday, it's something a little bit different. So on the first Friday of the month, they have the Cincinnati Zoo that comes in doing hands-on learning activities with the students. And a lot of times, they'll bring in exotic animals from around the world. And I'm working with one of my neighbors who lives across the street from me, he's in charge of any of them that have thumbs. So he's in charge of those guys, and he's going to try to work something out where he can have the kids even come down and visit and kind of get an inside view of things. On the second Fridays of the month, School Aid comes in, does some fun activities, gets them moving with some great listening skills and also doing some teamwork activity. On the third Friday, Newport Aquarium brings in animals and a wealth of learning about the world's waterways and the oceans. And then on the fourth Fridays, the police department comes in, they talk a lot about safety, they talk about the history of Norwood Police Department, and they give them kind of a glimpse of career opportunities in law enforcement. So each and every day, the students are in these after-school programs, they have 30 minutes of additional academic time as well. And it's called Expressway Academic Time. They work on math and reading, is which of their primary focus. And they have homework help. And, beginning in January, Ms. Ferguson had told me that the tech-free family night will begin, so the first Tuesday of the month will be Newport Aquarium coming in, and then the Art Academy on the second, and on the third Tuesday, the Norwood Police Department again. Those are some basic things that we're going over and covering our building. We continue to do some amazing things there. It gets kind of overshadowed with a lot of the things that I do, and I miss out on some of those. OTES is one of our biggest competitors for time. It is a time-consuming program, but we understand that it's part of what we need to do, and we continue to work on that as well. Our church this year says Building Stronger Minds, with a little muscle in there, and our teachers are working hard and are doing some amazing things. And I challenge each and every one of you. In my newsletter, this is kind of what I'm going off of for the Norwood Star this month. I say, I encourage each of you to get involved and visit Williams Avenue Elementary and see what makes our Wildcat pride so special. Be a part of the expectation in helping the Wildcats at Norwood City School. Learn today, dream big, and lead tomorrow. So thank you very much, I appreciate it. Y'all have any questions?
Mark really believes in personal contact, so all of his first grade parents need to call personally to let them know about that transition. So I know we all know that's how you feel about a lot of your work. We look forward to your status reports each week, along with your photos.
Yeah. We take a lot of photos and we post those. Class Dojo is a great way, again, Twitter and Facebook.
It's an app.
It's an app.
Is it a free app or a?
It's a free app. They have a paid version, but it gets a little bit more in-depth, and we're not there yet. And what it's, we're using it for now is perfectly fine.
They might come in on one of those thumb Fridays.
Yeah.
Come and check that out.
Ron Evans lives right across the street from me, he's in charge of all the apes and the primates and stuff. And if you, if you ever hit out in front of our building, we have the new safe routes to school. Everyone's got a little bit of something done, curbs and such, and the crosswalks. We've never had any type of lighting. We've had like two signs, that was it. Now we've got a few more signs. Most of those signs say speed hump. If you haven't gone over the speed humps yet, they're not as high as the ones you'd see in other places. But they do slow down. The first day, the next morning, when I was pulling it apart, I'm walking away from my car, coming to the building, and I hear a huge boom, 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 boom! Whatever was in that box truck bounced around a few times. For cars, it doesn't really slow them down that much, but it does give them a heads-up of what's going around. And I do know that during the crosswalks, because I'm out, I'm out front every single morning, unless I'm in a meeting, and then outside every single day, unless I'm in a meeting. And it does slow the cars down. There was a lot of questions on social media about what it was, what was going on. But it was welcomed. And from my understanding, talking with Donat Lake, there are some lit signs, signs with lights, that are coming to all the schools as well. So that'll be nice, to see those coming as well. So if you saw me this morning, it was cold, I had my bibs on underneath my coat. These big orange hunting bibs on, but I stayed warm and I greet the kids each and every day with a high five and a smile. I started that when I was a teacher in the classroom. But I also, when I was assistant principal of the middle schools, out front every, every single morning. And now at Williams, doing the same thing. And what that gives me is a good sense of how the day's going to go. I can tell if a kid's upset, I can tell what kind of demeanor they have. And if a kid is upset, I make a note, mental note of that, I talk with our counselor, and one of us, you know, throughout the day, will go and check on them at least once, if not twice, just to make sure things are going well. So that's just another good way of setting up those, those boundaries and opening up those doors for communication with the students as well. So, thank you for this opportunity. We never had this opportunity before, but appreciate it. It's always nice to see you. I mean, I see a few of you here and there, and I don't, I don't fear you in any way, but it is difficult to stand up and talk in front of, you know, every single one of your bosses. It's a different feel, so you could sense a little, little bit of nerve in there, but thank you though, I do appreciate the opportunity.
So I will tell you, I had the opportunity to send a postcard to Mr. Martin's class.
Nice.
I sent it from Siberia.
Wow.
And let me tell you, that was an experience, trying to go to the post office in the middle of Russia. And send a postcard back to the US. There was, there was a line of like 60 people, 15 people working behind the counter, and only one person actually helping the people. It was, it was an absolute nightmare, but worth it, worth it. It took about, it took about a month for Jake to get the card. And then I just found out that I've got colleagues of mine, so he's getting more cards from Brazil, Zambia, and Australia.
That's incredible.
So those are on the way.
His goal was to try to get all 50 states. And within the first month, he was like, I think we're going to reach that, we're going to try to get at least one from every country if we can. So that's, yeah, he's, he's, he's something else. I met with him today for actually a pre-conference in OTES, and it went really well. He was so nervous, he's like, I think I forgot this, I think I forgot that, but you're fine, you're fine, we got this. He's doing great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go to the reserve game where my son's playing.
Thank you.
Do you mind if we move the construction update at the end of the performance? Ms. Jones, you're working on that.
Absolutely, yeah.
We always like to give you an update, so we'll probably see construction update on our agenda for the next five years or so. But we wanted to let you know that the dust cleaning is complete. So when we say that, you know, that area in, below the auditorium, that is being completed, and we have clean test results to prove it. And so of course, the auditorium was used last Thursday for the Bean concert.
Thank you.
And preparing for the Botha concert on December the 20th. Now, construction's still taking place in the boys' gym, they have to put back that ceiling. So we're going to keep what we affectionately call the mushrooms in the auditorium covered, just because we don't want any dust or anything to, to make its way up into the auditorium. So in eight of the occupied classrooms, though, in the west wing, we do plan to have those cleaned over winter break. So that gives us plenty of time to do test air samples and things of that nature, just to make sure everything's.
Is that a regular cleaning, or is that more like a detailed, deep cleaning?
It's a detailed, deep cleaning of the ductwork that had been sealed off for 20 or 30 years. SHP came up with the idea, so you can remove those covers and use that existing ductwork to bring in outside air for the new VRF systems.
Okay.
So it's ductwork, it hasn't been looked at in decades. So there's six classrooms, actually I think there's seven classrooms and a library. So the library has multiple pairs of ductwork.
What I'm excited about is, the only way you could get fresh air before would be to open the window.
Right.
So this is really exciting, the fresh air, I think it would make for a healthy, really healthy environment. In the boys' gym, as we said, you know, the ceiling should be replaced. And again, now they'll start working on that.
They should be starting to work on that.
The scaffolding is still in place.
Correct.
So.
I think that'll be a couple of weeks long project, so it'll be a few more weeks before the ceiling is back in place in the boys' gym. And they have holes to replace on the girls' side to get, they have to get in through to get the ductwork in, and the platinum areas cleaned. And the platinum area is clean.
And there's gonna be a new wall put back on the inside stairwell from, I guess, like, house left. That stairwell is open, like, just right to the gym. There's a gap about this wide between the backstage area and then where it goes down the stairs. There's a big section of wall missing. So, is that gonna be closed off, a bar?
I didn't know that it was already closed off.
There wasn't a hole there. It's like somebody could just fall and like, down they go. There was at least plywood or something there that prevented you from just falling into the abyss of the gym. You had to walk all the way around before.
On the girls' side?
On... So, if you're in the auditorium and you're at the backstage level, ground level entrance, house left, if you walk straight back and you keep going, there is a hole about three and a half feet tall that just drops into the entrance, like, on, you know, that storage level on top of the girls' gym? It just drops onto that. So, will that be closed off? Because I was back there.
I'll have to go check sometime.
Go check it.
But not if we're alone.
Yes. As soon as you walk through that door that's on house left, you'll see it. It's up to the stairs, from the wall to the stairs. So, it's only about maybe five, six feet wide, about three feet tall, but plenty big enough for people to fall down. Or if kids get interested, start playing around with it, they could definitely fall down there and hurt themselves.
Go check it out.
So, I didn't see it. I came walking around the stairs, I'm like, "Whoa, there's a hole there." Big, giant hole. So, yeah. Definitely check that out.
Okay.
The fieldhouse is being used even tonight. It's been used for some time now. But there are still a few items around the list that we want to take care of that will require some inspections. I think the banners have been hung that you know what school districts we play against.
Yes, that was right last week.
With regard to the east wing, the abatement is complete except for the ground floor and the stairwell areas. And do you think that perhaps they'll start working on those areas in the next few days?
On the ground floor? The ground floor's still under containment.
Right.
Yes. So, that'll be another, hopefully, a couple of days or a week before that containment can come down. But they have the final air samples in there to make sure that the containment can't come down. And then, the stairwell will be under containment right where the handicapped entrances is.
We have addressed a door propping issue from our contractors. And it's been being known that if a contractor or tradesman props a door open, then we send help about the day that day. So, that's happened twice with a total of three contractors or tradesmen sent us. I put on your packet just an example of some signage that we're in the process of getting ready. It actually is in color, but I saved ink to not print it for your color. But we're planning on that sort of signage for each of our projects as we move forward. So, we'll be able to check those off, of course. And we, at this point, the middle school, we think that we'll hang it somewhere closer to the building, rather than out closer to the street, just because we didn't want students to check off items for us, so right out is on. The elevator, everyone is very excited for the elevator. The only cause right now has just simply been some tiling at a few levels as you approach that threshold. And that's what we're waiting on. Could you add more to that, John?
The connector hallway on the ground floor, that hallway had to be completed before they released the elevator. The tile was laid last week. I think they've got some ground work to do in that tiled area. Hopefully, that's today or tomorrow, the next few days anyway. And then, as Dr. Sable just said, thresholds on the upper floors, floor one, two, three, where they cut through the wall and put the elevator doors. You've got thresholds, you've got filling. So, hopefully, those are done in the next few days. And we can get the elevator inspector here and get the passes.
And with it being so cold out, are they able to pour the concrete access to that... the parking lot for the elevator floor entrance? Or are they gonna have to wait till spring?
That's not supposed to happen until later.
Okay.
Yeah.
Actually, even perhaps this summer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we're also expecting another ramp as you go into the fieldhouse from the Elm Avenue side.
Yeah, I was worried. I didn't know if they were gonna do that kind of early, while it was warm enough, and just go ahead and add a ramp.
I think their theory there is with all the traffic that comes in the elevator, rather than pour a new ramp and have it damaged with heavy equipment coming in, that's one of the very last things they do, is they're all leaving the premises.
Okay. So, is there... But is there an access ramp right now? So, when the elevator opens, are people still able to get into the building and... through the old, the back door?
The boys' side actually has a ramp.
Okay.
This is the side that faces the high school. So, you can't come in that way. You can't... It is a level walkway through the existing handicapped entrance. That's all the way on the north end. But that will be under containment. So, they really won't be able to come in there. So, yeah, once the elevator is ready, you can get in the building. And once you can come across the high school with the ramp over there, you can get to all the floors.
John, you wanna talk to them a little bit about what we discovered in the ground floor, first floor and second floor of the east wing?
The floors themselves. The floors themselves, when they took up the hardwood floor, they have what they call sleepers. And I just refer to them as joists. I'm not sure what exactly the difference is between a sleeper and a joist. But they have the sleepers. And between the sleepers, in the void there, is a concrete or gravel-type material. If you were to pour... The plan is to pour a concrete floor in these new nine classrooms on the three floors. But my understanding is if you were to pour the concrete, it would be pretty thick over the gravel or concrete material. And then, it'll get real thin over the sleeper areas because the sleepers are taller. So, if you only have an inch or two of concrete poured over that, once you go to lay your floor, that's probably right where cracking would be. So, we could have a new VCT or VLT floor installed. And we could have cracking within the first couple of months. So, the solution they came with, they're gonna have to pull up both the sleepers and the concrete substrate underneath it in order to pour a thicker material as a substrate.
How far do those sleepers extend out beyond the rooms?
They don't... I think they end right at the hallway.
Right at the hallway.
From them, where the old hallway was, all the way up to the windows.
Okay. So, if you remove them, you're not gonna have to take them out? Because a lot of times, I mean, sleepers go back to old barn construction. And so, that's where you would have the upper level that's on a hill. And then, the sleeper joists would go all the way across, and you would have the lower level on the lower side of the hill. But so, normally, sleeper joists extend beyond where the...
Original stuff right at the hallway.
Okay.
This all started when we were trying to reuse the original wood floors. But in the abatement process, they were cut so that we were not able to reuse them.
Okay.
So, is this a better solution than to just replace the floors with either new wood floors or something where we wouldn't have to rip out all the substrate and the joists?
That'll happen too. They have to replace the flooring and the floors, and then the flooring on top of it.
Oh, I thought they were saying concrete floors. Because I've seen people do new concrete flooring. So, you're talking about pouring concrete and doing the wood on top of it and concrete?
Polished concrete was even more expensive.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we investigated that. I was trying to get out of it as inexpensively as possible.
Right.
So, what we decided on, once the floor is secure and safe, because they said it would move around that part of it, that they will pour more concrete. And that will be a perfect material to receive the vinyl luxury tile, which we've selected that looks a lot like wood. But it won't sound like, I'm not trying to say not parquet, but it sounds hollow.
Wait a minute. Totally, a minute.
So, we looked at M.D. Elementary in Deer Park, and they had that. And we think it'll wear well and still give that old feel. So, what will be nice about this is, you know, thresholds between the hallway to the classroom are always tricky. We were always having trouble with those metal strips to receive the... What's that kind of tile?
VCT.
Okay. Yeah, we were always having trouble there. So, what would be nice is they'll be able to get that cement level just right to meet that tile that is traditionally in our hallways that we all appreciate. So, we'll be glad when that's finished.
So, we're expecting...
And we expect that that will be finished this spring, actually. That's the goal of April. So, that's pretty exciting. We wanted to move on and just let you know a little bit about Sharpsburg. We have for some time had scope meetings as well as design meetings, not just us, but including the good folks that were selected by Mr. Westendorf and even parents participated in that. And we believe that we have that in those parts nailed down. We have some good reports from our abatement testing to indicate the scope of the work moving forward as best we possibly can. We're trying to really get rid of those terms. What is it, things we didn't... we're on course in? We're really working hard to get rid of those on course in items. And also, we're really committed to providing a safe drop-off area for parents. So, there are two different curb cuts for the primary as well as the elementary. So, I know they'll be working with the city and likely state officials since that's a state route to make that happen. So, that is higher, are listed in quarters, as well as new elevator at the elementary. So, we will continue to keep you posted as more of that work moves forward with Sharpsburg. But just know that we intend to go to bid in late January.
So, I have a question about that. For the drop-off for Sharpsburg, did they not consider the backside of Sharpsburg there?
Which one, the primary and the elementary?
For the elementary. Just because it's not on the main state route. Because that's a heavy traffic street. But over here, it would cut in towards the playground, which they'd be able to use the playground entrance.
The elementary's not the concern, it's the primary building.
And they can't do that on Forest?
They haven't been given a no.
Okay.
But we're trying to, with what's been proposed, just investigate and see what our options are.
Okay.
So, as you come to that, you know where the entrance is to the primary. If that were on your right, the proposal is to cut a curb there and the drop-off, run the length of the building and the exit out onto Forest.
Do you just go on the backside of the building?
Okay.
Remember, we're trying to create more markings as well. So, with that solution, it brought more causes for concern. How do we get the children out of cars safely? Going on the right side or the left side? It's warm weather, cold weather. So, it's brought some great conversation. They're all in the interest of safety and convenience. So, that will... More to come on that.
For the next couple of years.
Do you have any questions for us with regard to construction?
I guess, in regards to the auditorium, since I was in it last week, the backstage area, I know we repainted it when we did all the smoke damage and things from the fire many years ago. But I noticed that in the backstage area, at the very top of the catwalk, a lot of the paint up there is peeling. And I don't mean like a little, I mean, there's chunks the size of my hand or bigger falling off the top. I don't want to necessarily repaint the whole thing because we've got all those signatures back there. But maybe the very top part of the catwalk, is there a way that we can get that kind of contained? Because I don't know if that paint is a safe paint. If it's, you know, if it's gonna chip all over the place and do further damage down the line. Is there a way that we can maybe...
It's usually not part of our scope.
Yeah.
So, I had to go to our association to get funding for that.
Because it's not a huge section, but it's definitely something that needs work.
The entire space could use refresh.
Yeah.
And you get up close to it, you see it, when the lights are down, it, of course, it's really lovely. But actually, when the lights are on, it's showing its age.
Yeah.
It needs some attention. Some plaster work, too.
Yeah, the last refurb was done in ninety-eight when there was the fire, so it's...
And I think that was just new chairs and paint.
Yeah, pretty much, because of the smoke. Anything that's smoke damage, they had to rip out. But we haven't had any major overhaul in there.
So, I'd like to person at some point.
If I could show them pictures, that would maybe help, I think.
Thank you, John. We appreciate your time.
Okay. You'll see. Can't miss it.
But is it new?
It's that big.
Is it something they just put into?
I mean, I haven't been in there like, until the concert. So, I don't know when that hole came about. But it's a giant piece missing.
Are you seeing that on the bullpen side?
On... So, if you walk into the theater, like, if literally, if that's the stage, that side, right where I was when I came offstage, it's floor level.
So, if you're looking at the stage?
If you're looking at the stage, house left, go in through the little back door, and it's on the bottom level. And it's just a big piece of wood is missing. That's why I was like, I thought it used to be maybe railing or something that was there, or maybe a block. But I know you couldn't just like, hey, fall off. But you definitely could.
I wonder if it's for the...
It's on top of the girls' gym.
Ductwork.
Oh, you're on the girls' gym side?
Yeah.
So, that's on the right side?
No.
No, her house left is...
House left.
So, you're standing on the stage, you're talking about the left side?
If I'm standing on the stage, right side. If I'm facing the stage.
Houses the seats.
House is seats.
That would be the boys' gym.
Stage is left.
That sounds like the boys' gym side.
Yeah, and there's a stairwell that goes up through the plenum into the area.
And then, down and outside.
Well, that happens on both sides. We have the stairwells that are underneath. I'm not talking about that. When you come all the way up and around, there's... Trust me, there's a hole there.
I'll see you right now and come back and get you.
Okay. I'll take you over there myself and show you what it is. But trust me.
I'm gonna check both sides.
It's just that one, I promise.
Don't fall in.
Don't fall in. I was like, maybe I took a picture of it, and then I can show you what I'm talking about. But there's a big hole back there.
All right. Well, I know we moved things out of order, but next we have on us the report permits. So, the first one presented to us was Stonies Pub and Grub. And we mistakenly signed that. And of course, we called the officials on the document to let them know that that signature is not accurate and that the Department of Education would make a final decision. And so, the second one, Jgril. I believe that space is, if you wanna call it bonded, it's not bonded.
Sunoco.
Sunoco, which is on, actually, I don't know, what'd you say? Well, not five hundred feet from here, less than five hundred feet.
Eighty.
Oh.
Sunoco?
Yeah, that's Sunoco.
Oh, oh, over here?
Yeah. Sunoco actually sells beer. So, if you drive by it, they've got a big Bud Light sign. Now, how they...
Are they selling it already?
Yeah.
We'd approved one for them... Well, we didn't approve one. The city approved one for them in the past.
Oh, really?
And I don't know if they sold the ownership change.
I think that's...
That's what happened.
They've always sold liquor there, or beer at least.
I know it was presented to us several years ago and we voted against it as a school.
Right.
But the city...
And we wrote that.
Did whatever they wanted to do.
So...
Well, because, doesn't Ameris Stop sell liquor also? Because they're just as close. So, I don't think that it would be fair for one quick stop in a neighborhood to have access and the other to be denied when they're literally across the street from each other.
And I said the same thing. I did, years ago. And the way it was explained to me is Ameris Stop kept the permission. We're not talking about them, we're talking about the new one. And as a school, we want to approve the sale of liquor to a new establishment that close to our buildings.
But it's really the same establishment, it's just a new ownership.
Yeah, it's a new permit. So, it comes to us every time.
You have to go through it.
Oh, I understand. I'm just saying, I'm not looking at it as a new proprietor. It's the same one, and people in the neighborhood think it's the same one. Regardless of, you know, Joe, Bill, or Bob owns it, it's still the gas station that they go to on a regular basis.
So, I reached out to Chief Kramer onto both permits. And Chief Kramer told me that for the Sunoco one, and I'm gonna just talk about this one because this is a little bit easier of a conversation. Um, the last time that the North Police Department had an official run to the Sunoco station was in two thousand fifteen. Believe it or not, he was actually surprised when we looked it up. So, um, I don't know how much business they really do. I don't know how much you could really sell. I mean.
I don't hardly ever see anyone over there getting gas.
The square footage of their shop is like the size of a closet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're just selling tall boys and.
That's probably it.
Right. Um, so, so we're, we're given four different options. We're given four different options on this form. Um, for the Sunoco one, it is my recommendation that we choose, um, the second option. So if you look at the form, the second option is to request the Division of Liquor Control, um, our objection to the issuance of the permit, but we do not request a hearing. So we're objecting to the permit, but we're just doing it without a whole lot of fanfare. The other two options, I think, would require a little bit more effort on our side. And, and if, you know, so I don't know how everybody feels about the Sunoco one, but that's my recommendation. Is that we just say, okay, we're going to object to it because, you know, whatever. But, uh, but we really don't care what happens. For, for the Stonies Pub and, Pub and Grill. So I reached out to the community, um, and, and I just did it publicly. And I was just trying to see what kind of reaction I would get. Good, bad, ugly, whatever. Um, so I had been approached by people who work there. I had been approached by people who go there. And I've been approached by people who live around the area. And for people who work there were telling me how great the place is. Um, I had one person who I highly respect, who has been going to that bar ever since it was Shapers, who tells me that he's been going to that bar ever since they changed ownership and, you know. Right. And he doesn't have a problem with it. And, and then I get into a lot more scary stories. So I had one community member page out to me and with the story that her and her friend thought that they had actually got drugged at the bar, couldn't remember, and then actually filed a police report after the fact. Um, I had gotten a number of complaints from community members. I mean, and most of them are your typical parking and smoking outside and noise complaints and stuff that you would get with, with a bar.
Not stuff that would affect the school?
Not stuff necess- but they're going to be open during the day, so you're going to have these people doing this stuff potentially during the day. Um, I've had two community members tell me that they're actually selling their house and moving because of the new ownership of the bar. And I had one friend of mine who I respect tremendously, um, who told me that, um, more than likely, and there's no evidence support to support this, but any of the drugs running in and out of our are coming through that bar.
So now was that when it was the former ownership?
No.
That's just moved since then.
Correct. Um.
So how long has Stonies had the pub?
Uh, since October.
And they haven't been able to serve liquor? Or they are serving liquor?
No, they're already serving it.
Even though they're not allowed?
They're, they're, they're in business. So for a variety of reasons, variety of reasons for this one, I think we should consider, you know, objecting and, you know, holding a hearing and figuring out what that process is. I do not think this bar is going to be a good community neighbor. I, you know, I struggle with this because I don't want to harm, harm anybody's business. But you want the right types of business, especially when it's surrounding the school. And for this one, you know, whether it's holding a hearing in Columbus and, you know, by figuring out what's entailed with that, or her, holding a hearing here in Hamilton County. I, I would imagine we probably have to get our official position together. We probably have to elicit the support of our legal team in order to participate in that. I don't know. I think that should be the topic of discussion here, but.
Is there a way to list, issue a license that is restricted to non-school hours, like an after-five kind of thing?
Uh, state.
They don't have a split thing if you're that close to a school, that you can't be open during school hours?
No, they, it's pretty much strictly, you know, you've got to be open by ten or eleven to serve lunch.
And they can't, and they can't restrict alcohol sales during lunch hours?
No, the only thing that they can do is restrict the sale after a certain period, like to, they're after midnight.
So they cut it off.
Yeah, one's midnight, one's twelve, or one's twelve, one and two, depending on one day.
Right.
But they all have to be opened up at the same time.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, if this bar, if this bar was one property lot further down Carthage, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. But it is where it is. Here we are.
Okay. We'll put it on the agenda. Does everybody else agree with that? Put it on the agenda next week, um, for your vote?
I'd like to see them take the same action on both of them personally.
I don't think they're applicable the same way.
Yeah, we sound like we're even. Well, we're even, but it also, we're not, we're standing for our kids.
No, I understand you're standing for your kids, um, but if.
But it's type of impact and neighborhood, neighborhood impact.
But that's not our job. Our job's to kids. That's our job. And so I'm standing, you know, if I stand for my kids, I'm going to stand for my kids whether it's eighty feet away and they're selling.
But they've always been there, selling the same thing. So that's.
They've come to a.
And their behavior has established that they have a good neighborhood. They've been.
So what evidence do we have to support holding a hearing for the Sunoco station when the last police activity for that place has been?
Over three years.
In, in two thousand fifteen.
It's not evidence to support, it's our stance. Where do we stand? How do we stand in our school district for, of, in regard to alcohol on school grounds?
Well, I, I'll tell you, it says exactly on this form.
And then the other, whereas conceivably they're purchasing and taking home, or, you know, they're not having it.
I mean.
I mean, that's how I would go. Because I totally understand where you're coming from, but I think that for me, that's.
One of the things guys, what they want to keep in mind on that decision is you're looking at one that is a race, that is opening up a bar, ask them for it, and we're told them no. And we have another one that is, uh.
So if you look at the paragraph, if you look at the second paragraph down, there is a sentence in there that says objections based solely upon philosophical opposition to alcohol consumptions are not sufficient grounds for sustaining an objection.
Right.
So if, if that's just our stance.
But this isn't based solely upon philosophical, this is based upon school policy. Our schools are against alcohol on the premises, premises, and we promote our children not to drink underage.
And allowing a business that's always done business and tends to be a good neighbor is, is requesting to maintain the same business that they have for years.
It's not my job. My job's to kids, not their business.
Right, I understand. But that business has established itself as a good neighbor. One business has established itself as a risk, as reported by our local police officers, saying these could be potential risks or not risks. That's where we have to take into our kids.
My opinion is, I would like to see them both treated the same way.
I don't think we can treat them the same way because of their background, given the police information.
So if, I'm just saying.
I don't want a blanket decision because it's not fair to do. They're two different entities. It's two different.
This is my decision, my opinion, and I'm entitled to that.
I understand.
So I have my opinion.
So.
And I'll, you know, vote, we'll vote on it next week however the board wants to word it, we'll vote.
So is there any way, I mean, because if, if we object to both of these and request a hearing, we're going to have to provide some, some legal counsel for this.
The only thing I'd be willing to agree to if you want a blanket statement would be the second one that we would object but not, not care, the second option, and, and let the decision fall to the city.
I, I wouldn't agree to that one either. I mean, I, I want to, I, if we're going to object, we should, we should care.
I don't object, though.
Well, and again, I, I, I respect your decision, but it's my decision, in my opinion, that I think we should object. That's my full opinion.
Okay.
All right.
So how about if we do get our legal counsel involved and they can recommend the wording for this and give us the pros and cons of both actions?
Would we be able to request some information from the police department as to, like, especially for the bar?
If you have any one, I'll vote, I'll. I just worry that we might be given one fuel for a fire because basically it's light somers, it's a black bar.
But see, that's, that's, I, I, I think that's.
We just want to say no.
No, no, I see what you're saying, but I think that's reading too much into it. I think if we object, we should have.
We need the police reports. We need evidence. We need history.
We need a valid reason for objecting. And, you know, I'm thinking objections based solely upon our philosophical opposition. Even though as a school district, we're against drugs and, and alcohol on our premises, the factor of the matter is this business isn't on our premises. If it was on our premises, if they wouldn't be doing, wouldn't be selling that, that type of thing.
But we're teaching our children to abstain. And we're teaching our children to refrain from doing this while you're underage. And then we turn around and vote in favor of allowing them to sell it.
No, because it's an, it's an adult establishment.
Let me finish. But if we vote in favor, we're sending a mixed message to our students.
No, we're not. We're saying responsible adults are allowed to use these services in your neighborhood because that's what they're allowed to do. And when you are an adult, you can go to that restaurant and have a beer if you so choose to. But a five-year-old that walking by after school at View should not be allowed to go into set establishment and buy a beer.
I'm going to disagree with you on this, no matter how much we discuss it, I'm going to disagree with you on it and.
I just know these businesses have functioned in these neighborhoods. I went to View and I never once walked down to that bar and had a drink after my third grade class, uh, you know.
I don't think the concern is whether children are going to try.
I never saw it as a bad thing.
You know, my children take that route, and I've seen a very big change. And there used to be, no one was outside. Now there are a lot of people outside. There's a lot of cars outside. And so, like, if I think everyone's walking that way, I mean, that's the type of something we need to be concerned with.
Which is why I was wondering if, if it is possible to, to talk to them about restricting their access and not be an open establishment during lunch hours. To have them have, and just because it's schools, because we don't want the traffic and, and the risk of drunk people in the middle of the afternoon when kids are walking home, I understand that. But that's why I want to give a business the opportunity to be a business, but be open in the evening because of their proximity to the district.
Which is, as I said, that's not part of that.
Yeah. So that's why I'm.
But yeah. I mean, my concern is you got one that's four hundred fifty-two feet away, and then you have another one that's eight, eighty feet away. You can tell the one that's four hundred fifty-two feet away, no. And then you tell the one eighty feet away, yeah, sure. You're, you're given, one group and a hearing, the opportunity to really blow it up.
But it's, it's not about, it's, it's about justifying your reasons for saying no.
Right. Their traffic influence to our walking students is not going to change from today to tomorrow based on this approval or not approval. It's always been that, that's what it is. It's, it's on the corner, kids walk by it. Their amount of traffic has not changed. Since October, and since they've become an open-for-lunch business, the traffic has changed, the dynamic has changed in terms of the number of people and the number of vehicles around that corner during kids walking to and from school. There is, there is an impact in the neighborhood for kids walking and, and the safety factor. Sunoco has not changed its business model or its customer level or the number of people coming to and from with or without this, because that's what they've always done. So I see it as two completely different instances because one is being directly impacted by them going from being a bar only to a pub and grill. That's the difference.
So, so Scott, I will say this, if legal counsel comes back and says that we have or can sustainably justify reasons for wanting to object to Sunoco, other, other than our philosophical opposition, then I'm all for it.
As I said, I'm just voicing my opinion.
No, no, I mean, that's what, that's why we're here having these discussions.
Um, you know, I'm not here to argue. I'm just here to, to tell you how I feel about it and, um, what we've traditionally done. And, and that's, you know, I, I understand where Amber's coming from because I felt the same way when I first got on the board. And they explained it to me. It's about the kids. It, it is. It's about, and, and you can say it's a philosophical difference, but it's a school policy that we're, we're binding, binding here into. That's the way, and, and I agree with them back then, and I still agree with it today.
So against Sunoco hasn't changed its behavior?
When this came up, the first time we voted against it, we, we.
And then what was the?
There wasn't the four options. It was yes or no. And we voted no, and they appealed, and they won the appeal.
And so they appealed with the city, did you say?
I, I guess it was the city. At, at that point, it was Steve Collier. I don't know.
But the board was able to make a, a statement.
We made a statement, no, or?
But since then, has Sunoco, I mean, obviously, again, this restaurant is different. But has Sunoco's behavior changed since we voted no before to how we voted now? Have we seen an impact on our school?
Right, yeah, we, we don't get, I mean, it's not like, you know, we're going to keep them operating.
I mean, they're really close to our ball fields. I mean, the springtime, that, well, then it's even for football.
So you're the thing, this, it's not a yes or no for us. It's not an.
It's just sort of giving input, is that what?
Yeah, basically, we're getting the input. The final decision's going to be set down through the state and through the city.
Then I would say I don't request a hearing and leave it to the city to decide. But we would disagree, so that way we could maintain a similar position, but to let the city decide and not hold a hearing.
I don't know. I disagree. I disagree with that.
Because if, if you hold a hearing, you're going to have to hold a hearing for both, and I don't think that both is applicable. I don't think that they apply the same way, nor should they. They're completely different types of businesses. Again, one is directly impacting how they changed the building.
Forty-eight feet from a school and you told me no, and there's one that's eighty feet from the school selling at a carryout, I'd be livid.
But it's different impacts for your neighborhood.
As a business owner, I'd be livid. Yeah, it doesn't matter if you're a business owner.
Which is why I'd say leave it to the city to let them decide.
I mean, realistically, when you look at it, you're forty-eight feet and you was.
Well, absolutely, you, you would, you would be livid, but hopefully, hopefully, in, in, you know, I would, many business owners would be like this. You would sit there and you would like, okay, so they said no to one, but not the other, so why is that? And then do a little bit of a deep dive and to start figuring out, okay, so, so they said no because of this, this, and this. Are we doing this, this, and this? Is that how I'm really operating my business and how I'm being pursued by the community?
And again, one's, one's a restaurant. One's going to involve more people parking on the street and being present in that corner, and one is a gas station that has been a gas station.
Where they can get the beer and come over and sit down and watch a baseball game.
Well, you, you can get a beer from Kroger, which is six hundred and fifty feet away.
That's right. Yeah, so.
Well, we don't have an option on Kroger. And I'll tell you, if Ameris Stop come up, I'd vote no on them too. I mean, you're within walking distance to the school. You know, you're out there and I'm happy, and I'm not saying it happens, but I'm not saying it doesn't happen. We find beer cans on the school ground, they can hear something.
No, I, no, I agree with that statement that, yes, there are beer cans. We don't know where they come from. However, you know, I'm not saying, I'm not saying no to Stonies because they sell beer or liquor. I'm saying no vehemently to Stonies because of the other activity.
Because of the drug.
That establishment. That doesn't have the same aura around the other establishment. That is the difference. But if our legal counsel says that we have firm ground to request a hearing for both, I'm all for it.
They serving food there?
So they said they're going to start here in the next few weeks, serving food. I don't know if they have their.
Oh, do they serve you? No, they serve food.
I think they have to get their, um, all their, their health code.
Oh, okay.
Respect it.
Yeah, all their, okay.
So I'm hearing you say you'd like me to see counsel from legal, and, um, it'll be on the agenda next week.
Okay. Um, so there's a, there's a deadline for this. I know it says.
Thirty days.
Thirty days. Um, from the original date, we're past that thirty days.
Do they have to resubmit?
So, so is this a mute point? Are we, did we just miss the window completely?
Well, has the attorney done also? What can we do now?
Like, if we don't respond in a certain amount of time, does the city just get to decide for us whether we like it or not?
Well, the one we called and told them to disregard our approval, so. That one might have given us more time.
Kind of work on that city-school relationship and, you know, find someone, um, that's that you all can speak to and voice our opinion if we add this at point in the motion.
I don't even know what committee this falls on here, on the, on the city side.
Um, you know, I'm, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah.
Is there a committee that does small business stuff?
Well, I mean, you have the Economic Development Committee, but I don't think, I don't think that committee really gets into this.
No.
I don't know. I can reach out and dial it. I can ask her. She'll probably.
I mean, maybe we can contact Keith Moore.
Keith Moore, Donnelly, I think would be the best.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Uh, education.
All right, just wanted to give you guys, I guess you got the email that Brandon sent out, but just as a reiteration for the Senate House Bill four ninety-one, um, six thirty got lumped together, and it went through unanimously through committee. And hopefully, the governor will be signing it very soon. Um, maybe as soon as next week, we'll have a yes or no on that. But it went through unanimously, so that's a really positive thing, which will mean that the graduation requirements for this year's students will be the same as twenty eighteen students. Um, twenty twenty, they'll move the GPA requirement to two point five for junior, senior year. And they'll also still have to do a capstone project as well, so.
So that's if you don't pass the hair test, correct?
Yes. And that concludes the report.
Uh, personal?
Thank you. Second floor, we have, um, under item number one, two, home inspection. Of course, number, number two, uh, third base school detention monitors. And item number three, of course, that our, our, which is certified, and having a few active contracts with a few folks to bring on board avenues for success, um, student assistant substitute. Of course, we're always checking our records, making sure that we're up to date and recognize that we wanted to put number five.
date, and we recognize that we wanted to put number five on. Typically, we do that in August, and so we noticed that we had not done that, so you want to prove all of our work with the county manager, as well as all of the people, all of our security details, and then, of course, we're on the 36th of August, and we're going to take some RTH check in.
Brandon, policy committee?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, everybody has a manila folder, and inside that folder are the two items for discussion. So, let's start off by discussing the reduction of professional staff workforce policy. So, this is the GPCPA-2-R. So, this is something that has been on our agenda a number of times. There are three alternate versions of this. So, hopefully, in the previous couple of meetings or, or months, I believe the general consensus, the last time we looked at this, was alternate version two was the one that we are going to officially adopt. So, this is the one that we'll be doing the first reading for, and just want to make sure that, that still everybody's consensus that alternate version number two is the language that we want to move forward with. If there is some difference in opinion for the other alternate versions, I think let's discuss that now. If not, we'll move forward with alternate version two and put that in. The second policy that we're going to look at for, for today's work is BDDH, which is our public participation policy. Mr. Faulkner had asked, when we were doing the adoption of our entire policy manual, that we pull this out separate and give this a closer individual look, so, so we have done that. Specifically in this is whether or not we want to keep the word residents, desiring to speak, or to change that to just each person addressing the board. So, I think the OSBA policy, or recommendation, was that we changed that language, because residents desiring to speak was in our original language. And the recommendation was that we change that to each person addressing, and Val and I said in that workgroup session, and we did discuss this specifically, whether or not we should change it from residents to each person addressing. I know, I know through that committee work, we decided to change it to each person addressing, but you had some opinions, and, you know, my mind is open, so if there are some specific reasons why you want to keep that as residents other than just each person addressing.
Well, like I said before, we're opening a can of worms, so we don't even need to open at this point. I mean, I understand OSBA's recommendation, it's the recommendation, they recommend a lot of things, they don't have to deal with it. We will, and just looking at Stonies, Stonies from the previous discussion, if we vote no on Stonies, and we change this policy, whether they live in this community or not, they're going to come and talk, and we're going to be bound to listen at that point. If we keep this as residents, then we only have to listen to those people who affect our children and our schools. And that's the way it's always been, and with legal counsel saying, wait until it's challenged to, to do it, and we've had that happen in the past. We've had outside residents, they have the opportunity to speak if we vote to give them that opportunity. It's our choice, though, by leaving residents in there.
Right.
But I don't think that's fair for you to say that if we have to make a decision because they are directly affecting our school by them being so close, but then they're not allowed to come and talk at a meeting by a decision that the school makes for them. They are a business owner in our community, that makes them a part of the community.
Can you just say that if they wanted to, if the board allowed?
If the board allowed, we could, by majority vote of the board, we could allow them to speak.
And if, if something happens outside the community, and somebody has an actual true grievance, if, if some of our kids decide to go and cause the image at a school, or if a parent sees something, I'm just saying...
But that goes to the superintendent, she passes that information along, there's a chain of command for that.
I understand, but there are instances where people outside the community, especially business owners who work and live here, and maybe they do business with students that we have, they would need to come and address things with us.
Well, but they have a person to come and address things with, that's the head of our school district.
And some folks may not know that, they may just know that, hey, there's a meeting, and they, they talk to the public at that meeting.
No, they all know there's a superintendent. All schools have a superintendent, and you go to the head and talk, and then if the head doesn't like it, if you don't like what the head says, then you take it up the chain.
And I think legal language and the fact that we are opening ourselves to litigation, if we restrict that language, we should follow the state's recommendation of each person.
So, so here's, here's my thought process on this, and where my head sits. You know, as a school district, we get our revenue sources from a variety of different places, from, not only from our local community that we rely upon, but also from the state level, and then also, we collect revenue from the federal level. So, in a sense, our stakeholders do not necessarily all live directly in the city. So, so if somebody has an issue with how we're conducting business, and this is what I'm talking about right now, is legitimately, you know, how we conduct business, spend our money, whatever, I mean, if they have a legitimate gripe with that, then I think we owe it to those stakeholders to give them their five minutes and 15 minutes for one individual topic per meeting, let them say their piece, and then we move on with the meeting. I mean, if you look back, you know, this is now my, my 12th month here on the board, and you look back in the past year, how many people have we had speak before us?
Well, I understand, I do. And looking back on 13 years, I know we've had people from outside the community who has come to address the board, some we've allowed to address the board, some we haven't because of the situation.
Right.
At least we had that option.
Right.
And I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate what you're saying about the shareholders that we have are not all within our community.
Right.
But we're elected by the people within this community.
Correct.
Our, our duty and responsibility is to our voters.
You also have parents that live outside the community.
Not to our shareholders, it's to our children, and to our parents, and to our voters. That's our duty and responsibility.
And not all of those parents live here in Norwood. Some of the parents that we have are split family homes, they may not live here in Norwood. But those parents have just as much right and effect to talk on any subject matter that may affect their child, which is our domain, is dealing with their children, and to tell them that they're not allowed to come and speak because they don't live here is, is not correct. And whether or not we have to choose, oh, well, you get to talk, and you don't get to talk, and you get to talk, that's going to even take up more time than just giving them the five minutes. I can sit here for five minutes and let somebody yell to the wind if that's all they really want to do to us, and we can either choose to take that and run with it and do some, some good to make change, we can say that guy's crazy, and we don't need to listen to it, but either way, it was five minutes that we have given that grievance, we've let that person speak. It is a public, open forum, it is an open meeting, it's what it's designed to be.
So, currently, right now, the, the policy as, so what's, what's here on top of the page, with residents desiring to speak, is what is currently approved in our policy So, as the policy committee chair, I am going to put the alternate language out on for a vote at the meeting. And then, so if we decide to change the language to each person, then we'll do the first reading. So, but if that is not approved by this board, then it'll just continue on, and so, if you vote no next week, you're just going to vote to continue with the same language that is currently existing. And I think that's the best way to move forward with this. So, we'll either just, you know, next week's meeting, it'll just be up or down, so either we'll change it, or we'll keep it the same. But I appreciate your thoughts.
I appreciate you listening, and giving me the time.
And I appreciate your 13 years that, that you've sat here and have dealt with a lot of hard decisions over the time. I do, I truly appreciate it.
Now, is there a way that we can add a line in here that if a person becomes belligerent, that we are allowed to cut off that five-minute time limit?
But see, that's already in, that's already...
That's in somewhere.
The first part of it when they read it.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So, we don't need it copied in this plan?
Right, and we already have it in there, that we read every meeting, that if it's a, if it's a personnel matter...
Right, I like that that's maintained here.
You know, this isn't a forum to hear personal complaints, I mean, there's, as Scott said, there's a chain of command for that.
Right.
But if somebody has an issue with how we're conducting our business, then, you know, so we give them our rights. Anyways, that is all of the items, so, so moving forward, we're going to recommend the first reading for the alternate version two of the reduction of professional staff workforce, and we are going to do the new page for the public participation at board meeting. We vote no on, on the public participation, it's just voting to keep what's currently in our policy.
All right, uh, tell us your brand. All right, George, you would be up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our monthly financial reports are attached for your review and approval this evening. For the month of November, the general fund revenues were just slightly higher than expected, and expenditures were about $178,000 less than expected. We're seeing savings in purchased services, and this is making our cash balance a little better than expected so far this year. However, to date, our revenue is short in other revenues due to less payments in lieu of tax. I hope to make that up later on this year. Our month-ending general fund cash balance was $11,616,000. We will continue to spend it to our general fund cash carryover until tax revenue starts again in January, which is typical. Appropriation resolution and 412 agreement is attached for your review, and again, that's just our estimated budget for the rest of the year. The urology group has requested another assignment consent for the community reinvestment area compensation that we have with them. We approved this in May, but their buyer backed out.
Wait, what's that? What is it?
We have an agreement with the urology group.
Yeah, that's this one.
Oh, there it is, okay.
They pay us tax in lieu of, or payment in lieu of taxes, and this agreement is just saying that the owner of the property will be different.
Yeah.
We've ran this past our attorney, and she agreed to it, so I'm recommending it for your approval next week. We have another agreement with Side Effects. Our softball scoreboard is not working, and that is the only team without a scoreboard in the district. With this agreement, we can have a new scoreboard with no upfront costs, we just need to pay for the install. Side Effects will get sponsors to pay for the advertising to reimburse the cost of the scoreboard. After the scoreboard is paid off, we will get 50% of the advertising revenue until the contract expires with Side Effects at 10 years.
So, we've never done this before with a company like Side Effects?
Yes.
We have?
We've not, no, I was agreeing with you, right.
In your previous lives or experience, have you worked with?
Alex has, and that's why he recommended it. Typically, what people do with a scoreboard is, of course, you have this huge upfront cost, and then you get sponsors...
Right.
To pay that off, takes a lot of time...
Yeah.
On the athletic director's part. He had a lot of good things to say about the agreement that he had used at his prior district, which is Kings.
So, so Kings did this, and, so I'm, I'm just, I mean, I'm intrigued by this.
Yeah, somebody found an itch, for certain.
Right, because this is fantastic, I mean, if this works, I mean, you know...
I do, I do want to know, though, is this scoreboard just for this soccer, or whatever team?
Softball, yeah.
Okay, so, when we were at the convention, especially, like, there were so many vendors there, it was crazy, but one of the really cool vendors that I did see was LED scoreboards. The LED scoreboards, you can size accordingly, the panels are easily replaced if one gets damaged, they're weatherproof, and you can have rotating advertisement, you can have them set up, you don't have to take one down and put another one up for a different team, you change out the logos, you change out the sponsorships, you could sell them quarterly, you could sell them per sport. So, if you have a volleyball game in the gym, and then you have a basketball game in the gym, you don't have to have multiple scoreboards hanging off the wall. So, have we looked into, if we're going to upgrade, or have these folks, you know, work on donating a scoreboard, why not start improving the tech? Get us an LED scoreboard that we can use for multiple purposes?
Well, I think, I think that's what this is.
This is for softball.
No, it's just for sport, it's just for softball.
No, but I, but I think, I think the panels are LED.
They are LED.
But if it's a logo or something like that, and then are the advertisements in LED form?
I don't know if it's running script, but I know that I asked about the lights, and they are LED. Our vision was that we would hit, this is the field, that's the, that we would hit from the building.
No, this is, this is like a giant, almost television screen, and you program it, so in this corner, I want it to say La Rosa's Pizza, in this corner, I want it to say Skyline, here, I want it to say Home and Away.
I, I thought I read that, that this, this has that...
It's a full LED.
Yeah, I...
Because these were, these were pretty awesome.
I would like our schools to, our schools to improve the app, and we have to submit in writing, we would like to have that.
And that is...
No, I, I agree.
Well, I mean, they just follow our policy for, you know, I mean, that's a...
It actually is in the contract that the district has to approve all the advertisements.
Yeah, that's, that's in there.
Something about...
Okay.
It just, I can't get it to pull up.
I just want to make sure that if we're investing in a scoreboard, it's not like we need this scoreboard for this team, and we need another scoreboard for that team, and another scoreboard for this whatever. I want to have one that we can have for all year-round usage by all of our sports...
Well, I mean, that would be...
And streamline it.
That, that would be different, scoreboards, I mean, because you're not...
Yeah, because they're different locations.
And, and it could be multiple locations at the same time, so you can't have one that you could train...
No, but like, if you had one, for example, at the Shea Stadium, it would work as a football scoreboard, and then it would also change to a track scoreboard when there's a track meet.
Right.
Like, fully functional, you just hit the program, and it changes how the scoreboard looks.
The Barstool Stadium, panel, or, or, two more, two more...
So, so Scott, item number six, still down to number six?
Yeah, it's all there down there, but we have to work, it was question and writing.
Give written notice of their desire to see the sponsor artwork. I mean, so, so we just made that, we just made that, you know, work of the superintendent to automatically do that.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I don't want to do that.
Right, and it's...
Because once it gets past us, if it goes up, it's our expense to take it down.
Correct.
So, this one, it's the choice of, so upon static LED or scrolling advertisement. So, it's, one of these will be the one we get, but it doesn't specify which one.
So, if you look, if you look down, so go to the very last page, so, so, right here, so option A is the sponsor panels, and then, and then, so if they can't sell, if they can't sell the sponsorship, then the backup is...
Static sponsors.
Static, because it's cheaper.
Okay, I'm just talking about the format of how the sign looks. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I...
George?
Okay, so, TriHealth has a renewal contract on the agenda to continue providing trainers for athletic events. The district has purchased a new used work truck for our snow removal and district repair needs. Before we purchased the truck, we, we checked with the state website where they sell their vehicles, but they were too old, too bad a shape. We also checked with our purchasing council, and they had no work trucks for sale. Finally, John Peter reviewed four different trucks listed at local dealerships over the last several months before finding one that included a snow plow. Our current plows cannot be used on the new truck. Our old work truck had electrical problems, engine issues causing it to stall frequently. Oh, no, I'm sorry, one more thing. It's long. I'm Gabby today. Although not on the agenda tonight, I will be adding a contract for an insurance consultant next week. This consultant specializes in district liability, property, and fleet insurance. Tom McGilly at School Insurance Consultants will get quotes for all of our insurance needs and then will provide management of those services every year, all year long for us. That only costs from $3,000 to $4,000 a year to have his services. And typically, districts save more than that because he bids all the districts. He serves like 117 districts in the state of Ohio.
He just passes the law over?
He does.
Okay.
And, and he really has a lot of experience with school districts. That's all he does. So he just knows the law so well that he's an incredible resource for a very small amount of money.
Would it be possible to request that Alex send us a photo of what that new scoreboard would be? I mean, read it on paper, I don't know. I'd like to see what it's supposed to be proposed.
All right. Um, I can mention to adjourn this meeting?
Second?
Third, fourth.
All right. And then we'll move to the...
Should we stay here or do we go?
You know what, could we, if you're okay with staying here, could we just order tickets? I'm having to order tickets.
Yeah, I will.
Oh, my chair is even colder.
Okay, are we calling to order or yes?
Start all over.
All right. Uh, let's see. We're taking you guys, we got a special board meeting tonight. Call to order. Call the role.
Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Faulkner?
Here.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
All right. Uh, let's see. Next will be the adoption of the agenda.
Adopted.
May I get a motion for a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
All right. Uh, next item of the executive session. According to ORC 121.22G1, appointment with ORC 121.22G1. Matters requesting to get confidence under federal law regulations for state statutes, which is 727, we're going to make executive session. Make the motion. Go ahead and click.
I'll second that.
Mr. Bryant?
For what? Yes.
Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Orza?
Yes.
Mr. Bryant?
For what?
Yes. Mr. Faulkner?
Yes.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.